September 13th, 2022, regular meeting of the Pinehurst Village Council. We will have a work session tonight upon the conclusion of this regular meeting. And as many of you who are here will know, if you wish to speak tonight under public comments at the end of the regular meeting, there is a sheet in the back of the room on the table. I would ask you to put your name there. The village clerk will pick up those lists in a few minutes' time, and then we'll use those to guide the public comment period at the end of this meeting. And as I said, there is a work session tonight, too. We have a number, quite a wide variety of issues on the agendas tonight, as you may know, and those agendas will be posted as we go through the meetings. Having called the meeting to order, I will ask for reports from council members and the village's manager, and I'll start with Jeff Sanborn. Jeff?
Thank you, John. I have nothing to report today.
Nothing to report, okay. My comments would be these. Labor Day weekend over recent years has brought the new barbecue festival to the village and our visitors from around central North Carolina. I was able to enjoy that. I hope you were, too. I would also like to acknowledge activities of our police department over the past several weeks, very active in their work in protecting the village of Pinehurst, and we thank them and our fire department and our other first responders for their service. With respect to direct reports, there was a meeting of the Partners in Progress, that's the Moore County Economic Development Authority, last week. Councilmember Pazella and I attended that meeting, and I would draw your attention and the council's attention to the fact that Moore County is one of 19 counties in what's called the NC Core. That's the sort of central, mid-central and south part of the state of North Carolina, running from approximately Greensboro, High Point, Winston-Salem, across and following Highway 421 all the way over to I-95, so sort of I-77 to I-95. And we're one of 19 counties, as I may have mentioned, in that swath. There is considerable economic activity throughout the NC Core, as well as there is in the entire state at this time. There have been, in the last four years, according to information we received last week, approximately 36,000 new jobs created within the NC Core. There's been a goal out a few years ahead to get that number to about 50,000, so it looks like that's going to be almost easily achievable. A number of major business activities, manufacturing activities, have centered in the, largely in the Greensboro, Ashboro area. That would include battery plants operated by Toyota and two or three other firms, smaller in size, but very interested in the electronic vehicle market. This activity is likely to bring considerable pressure, on the one hand, and opportunity, on the other, to all of the 19 counties in the NC Core, and that does not exclude Moore County, especially in the northern part of the county, which, of course, is an area that is in need of economic development. So all of this is a very positive event for the state and for this part of the state, but it does create pressures, and I'm sure we'll feel some of that right here in Pinehurst. Pat, I don't know if there's anything else about that meeting you wish to contribute on it, otherwise...
Nope, you covered it all.
Why don't you go ahead and make whatever reports you have then, too?
Just a couple items. One, the Harness Track in Fairbarn were featured in the new edition of Our State Magazine. Among, it was a story on North Carolina's majestic horses, so I think we're all very proud of that. The Harness Track here, and it's nice to be included in a publication like that that's circulated around the entire state. Secondly, last night, I had the opportunity to attend the Pinehurst Number Six Community Meeting, the homeowners' meeting, and I've done that once before. And once again, they have a tremendous output of people who almost fill this room, and they talked on a lot of issues, serious ones. The one that comes to mind that we around this table have discussed, of course, is the Walkways Project, which they are very interested in. They had done their own intensive survey, and they're going to provide us with some feedback, and they realize there's no guarantees, but they definitely have a real interest in that. And they are having their first in many years Holly Ball on Saturday, December 3rd, and it's open to others aside from just the Pinehurst Number Six residents. It's cocktails and dinner, but you should contact them about how to attend if you'd like to. Last item, Jane, before I say anything, are you going to say something on the Beautification Committee? Are you going to say something about the Beautification Committee meeting? Okay, and I'm through.
Thank you, John, and thank you for bringing up the barbecue festival. One thing that stood out among the many things was the number of volunteers, and Peter Stillwell said they had 100 people volunteer to help with that event, which I think is incredible, that that many people care to get involved like that. But also, Peter has turned over to me the brand-new economic impact numbers for U.S. Kids Golf, the world championship this year, and there's a lot of numbers, so I'm going to read them. The economic impact for U.S. Kids Golf 2022 World Championships, the economic impact for Moore County was over $10 million. This is staggering right here. The average each family spent was in excess of $8,000. The average number of nights in the community was six to seven nights. The combined economic impact for Moore County for the past 17 years is over $140 million. Community sponsorship contributions was between $12,000 and $20,000 annually, and he reports that they got $12,000 from the resort. This year, there were 2,200 participants from 55 different countries, and the average family attendees was 4.2 per player. Also, Peter sent me, I have an electronic form, it's their U.S. Kids Golf Foundation 2021 Annual Impact Report. If anybody would like a copy of this, please let me know, and I'm happy to send it to you. Last, in connection, not only with U.S. Kids Golf and with the barbecue festival, I want to say thank you to staff, I think probably Jeff Batt and Mark Wagner. I'm not sure who all on our staff participates in making those events so successful, but want to thank them, and Peter Stillwell doesn't want any thanks, but I think he's a hard worker, he's a Pinehurst resident who works really hard on these events, and I think he deserves a pat on the back. So that's all I have. Thank you.
I think we have that economic report, but if not, why don't you give that to the clerk, and she can distribute it, scan it, distribute it over the next several days.
Okay, and also, it really, it's hard to print out, so I'm happy to send you guys an electronic copy if you'd like it.
Thank you.
Jeff, Morgan?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Jane?
Yesterday, the Beautification Committee met after their summer hiatus, and they have been working on revamping the Manning Award as an award for landscaping, both for residential and commercial properties, and they're looking to present an award each June, each year in June. So that's pretty nice, to be able to have that recognition come back again in Pinehurst. And the other thing that they're doing is they're adopting the marker that's in Ritter Road to commemorate the 1900 solar eclipse, which apparently that was ground zero for the solar eclipse, believe it or not, at that time. And there's been a marker there, but the marker's kind of got a little bit lost in undergrowth and so forth, and so they want to make sure that that's visible for people to see, and that's nice to do, too.
The marker is under this huge tree at the corner of Ritter Road and Barrett Road in front of a home that's there. In fact, the home is owned by relatives of Rassie Wicker. And, yeah, it's there, and it should be better noted than it is, so I'm delighted to know that. And I'll just clarify, the Manning Award, the name for that comes from the assistant to Frederick Law Olmsted, Warren Manning, who was the person actually on site here in 1895 and beyond, looking after the development and design and landscaping of the village of Pinehurst as we even see it today. Glad to have that word come back to us. Thank you, Jane. Having had these reports, and reminding you once again, if you wish to speak at the comment section at the end of this regular meeting, please sign the list at the back of the room. And for those of you who are listening on livestream, if you wish to communicate any information to this meeting tonight, you can do so by sending an email to publiccomments@vopnc.org, and the village clerk will receive that and distribute those later to council members and staff as required. Having done that, we'll move on to agenda item number three. That's a motion to approve our consent agenda. Is there any, are there any issues or questions about the consent agenda that would require further discussion from the council and wish to be discussed? Seeing none, is there a motion, please?
I move to approve all items listed and consider routine on the consent agenda.
That's a motion by Councilmember Pazella. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Councilmember Morgan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We'll move on to agenda item number four, which is the beginning of the heart of the meeting tonight, and I think Mr. Wagner will probably be with us for quite a while, but we'll go first to the library. Jeff, do you want to introduce that?
Yeah, thanks, John. I know council all is aware that we maintain a fees and charges schedule that the council adopts at least annually. Typically, in the January or February timeframe, we update that, but every once in a while we have a desire or recognize an opportunity to improve upon that off-cycle. And given the fact that we just, over the last six or seven months, incorporated the Givemorale Library and Tufts Archives into our village operations, and at that time we did incorporate some necessary language in our fees and charges schedule to cover their operations, but, you know, we've gotten some feedback from the library and archive staff that it might be appropriate to amend how we classify the fees for digital images in a more intuitive way that's easier for everybody to understand. So I'll turn it over. I think Brooke's going to make the majority of this presentation, but Audrey's here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Jeff. Yes, as Jeff mentioned, as you all are aware, with the library becoming part of village operations in April, in preparation for that transfer, you all adopted and approved the fees and charges schedule for the library in February, and the library has been operating under that current fee schedule since April, and they have requested a few revisions to assist with some of the interpretations and challenges that they're facing in day-to-day operations. There are only a few adjustments, as Jeff mentioned, to the digital images section, and that's related to the archives component of the fee schedule. The main change was essentially moving from an image usage fee, so whether or not the image is being utilized for a commercial purpose or a nonprofit purpose or things like that, transitioning from that structure over to an entity-type fee. So is the entity requesting the image a commercial entity versus a nonprofit entity? So it takes away some of the ambiguity that staff is currently facing with some of those decisions in how to charge customers. There will now be three types of fees for digital images: the commercial entity fee, a non-commercial entity fee, which would basically be a personal use, and then the nonprofit entity. And that will make it easier for library and archive staff to administer and comply with that fee schedule. We have also incorporated definitions for each of those items onto page seven of the fee schedule. Those definitions are very similar to those that we utilize in the Fairbarn section as well, just for consistency purposes. We are proposing that the changes have an effective date of tomorrow, September 14th, pending approval tonight, of course, and we do have a redline version included in your packet to show the exact changes that are being made, and they're relatively minor, and as well as a resolution for your consideration as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, or if Audrey has anything she'd like to include.
Just one question for me to at least start with. We've come through several months' time. Audrey, thanks to your good stewardship and that of the other staff, and these are the only fee charges that seem to be out of line at this point in time, so that also says that everything else is about right, as far as you can tell, and we'll hear from you later if not. Is that fair to say?
Yes, thank you.
Good, good. Questions from council on this particular change? Patrick?
Not on this particular change, but I do have a question. Why is it that we've decided not to have a library fee charge for non-residents while Southern Pines charges $60 a year for non-residents?
That isn't really one of the things that we changed, but the background on that, the background is there are so many areas immediately around us that do not have a library, and we also have library card people, owners or whatever, library users who maybe are here a month a year or half a year for the season, et cetera, and they've always, in the history of the library, had library cards. We have West End, Seven Lakes, Jackson, all these places right around us that don't have libraries. So it's always been our practice now. Southern Pines does charge, and when you want to get a library card, they pull up a GPS map and say 65 or free. It's one of the things that I thought I would like to continue, a practice that I wanted to continue, is welcoming people in our neighborhood to use the library. And we had talked about it in several meetings, that this is something that we may address down the road, but rather than changing everything at one time, maybe we'll see how things work and how it goes. And I don't think any of the neighboring communities have any plans to build a library at any given time, and one of the standard operating practices of a library is access to information. So that's just kind of the way we always were. Now, do you guys want to change that? That's definitely...
Southern Pines offers two types of libraries. You can get it for six months or for a year. So for the part-time person, I think it's 30, and the full year is 60, and it's apparently an annual fee, it's not a one-time fee. So it just caught me off guard, because when I saw no charge, I thought, that's great, and then I said, let me see what they do around us, and Southern Pines was...
More background to that, though, Patrick, is that we were a nonprofit so long, and all these people gave to us, supported our events, came to our parties, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And so in many ways, they paid for that library card. But they were our supporters and our donors, and when we cut those people out, you know, they're, while the donations don't come to the village of Pinehurst, they do come to the foundation that will support the library and the archives and their special needs, perhaps in expansion, et cetera. So it's kind of a, do you want 25 or do you want 100 from somebody?
I'm not proposing that we make this change now, but I do think, I think we should charge something for our non-residents.
Sure, and we have talked about that, too. Like Audrey mentioned, we did discuss it in some of our preliminary meetings as we were developing the recommendation to bring to you all in February, but at the time, the system, the current software system that the library has does not allow for it, and so we were, you were also looking at changing software companies as well, and so we were going to evaluate whether or not a new software system could accommodate having those kinds of fees or a card system and that sort of thing built into it as well.
I remember as a child when we went to a library that wasn't in our community, but it was closer to us than where we lived. We had to pay a few dollars, it was a big thing, and I got my first little library card, and put it in my wallet. But there was a fee associated, there was a value associated with it.
Right, and I think nominal fee might be, wouldn't upset me, but...
I don't see this as a profit maker, I just see it as a sort of a value.
I see it as a barrier to access, though. I really do.
I'm seeing technology's driving part of this issue as well.
It was, that's right, that's right.
We can revisit that.
That's exactly right. Once we have the new system in place, we can see whether or not it's an option, and we would assume that a new system would allow for that and make it more possible, if you will, for us to be able to do that and administer those fees.
Just one generic suggestion when we look at this again, not just for the library in general, I would find it useful if where there is an increase in a fee for anything, to note that there's an increase or whether it's remaining the same.
On the fee schedule?
Yeah, did we do that? Because I didn't see it in this schedule.
Right, so normally I do. Normally, we have a full-blown fees and charges review, and then we'll do it a completely separate schedule and show you what the original fee was and the new fee, and show the percentage increase. This was just a unique, one-off situation that had really minor adjustments, and the largest piece was a change to the description, more so than the dollar amount, and so, yes, sir, absolutely, in the future, you will see that spreadsheet.
I'm fine, thank you.
For a summary. Yes, sir, absolutely.
Are there other questions of Audrey? Jane, please.
How many of these digital images are sold?
I cannot answer how many images, but in the past, we have routinely made 20, $25,000 in image usage on a regular year during the open year, like coming up to and after the open. We make 35,000 maybe.
What are the images of?
They're images of cottages, they're images of the golf courses, they're images of Donald Ross, they're drawings of Donald Ross Golf Course, sketches. People call and say, have you got any pictures of George Marshall when he was in Pinehurst? Because we want to do a Marshall thing up at BMI or something. Yes, we have these pictures, and you can look at them. We give them a drop box, they look at them, they pick what they want to use. Another source is, if you look around at the resort, all those pictures are being paid for. They pay a usage fee to the Tufts Archives, the History Hall, all the pictures in the properties, and all the pictures on their advertising and media. We have two contracts, one for advertising and media and one for in-house, and they purchase. Each year, I bill them, and we reassess the contract every three years or sooner if they want to, and if they don't want to reassess, we just turn it over. I bill them, and they pay me.
And do these price points cover the costs that we have and everything?
Direct costs?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, at some point, I mean, we've done most of the digitizing in-house through the use of volunteer staff. The extra-large Ross drawings that are five feet long or something, we take them to a vacuum flatbed scanner in Wilmington that costs about 100, 125, and I did those when I first started there, so that's long since done. So there was some cost involved there, but as far as like digitizing the prints and negatives that we have, we don't pay anybody to do that. Did I answer your question?
So yes, that covers them, that covers the cost?
Oh, definitely, yeah, definitely, yeah.
And we do, she also sells actual physical prints as well in there, and then we do make sure that the fee covers the cost of paper and ink and that sort of thing, too.
We have a formula, we call the printer, and there's a per-square-inch price, and there's a formula that we have, so we can tell them ahead of time, this is what it's going to cost plus tax.
We're outsourcing printing, that's right.
It's a service of the library and the archives that really is used nationwide and even internationally, as my recollection, Audrey, because of that, especially with respect to the Ross drawings and the golf courses and the courses he designed that are undergoing renovation, they often come to you and they need these drawings, yeah.
Yeah, we frequently have John Lefoy, Kyle Franz, Gil Hans, everybody. If they want to do a proposal to redesign or refurbish a Ross course, they want to look at his drawings, because that's, everybody wants to go back there, and they want to see the way it originally was, and they want to get it as close to that. How many trees do I have to take out? How much deeper do I have to dig? How much top dressing do I need to get rid of? And the golf course architects come to us a lot, and they do not object to paying anything for that. I mean, they're happy to pay for it, because I can't get that anywhere else.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions of Brooke or Audrey?
I don't have any of them. Audrey, just, Brooke, excuse me, the Fairbarn, do we distinguish between residents and non-residents when we're charging?
We do.
We do?
Yes, we do. There's a resident, non-resident, nonprofit, and commercial, right? So very similar. The only distinction you don't see here in the library fee is the separation of resident and non-resident at this juncture.
And do we distinguish also on, and maybe I should remember this, when people take classes that we offer for the parks and recreation?
Yes.
We distinguish there also?
We do. There's a distinction between resident and non-resident.
And lastly, because I know I'll be asked this by various citizens, the parking ticket is a $5 fine. Remind me if that is a discretionary decision for the village of Pinehurst, or is that a statewide law or fee schedule we have to follow? I can't recall, and I'm guessing you remember, or somebody here does, maybe Jeff does.
I have to call a lifeline. Jeff, correct me if I'm mistaken. It depends on whether or not an individual is seen driving the vehicle or not. There is a statutory limitation or some kind of limitation that restricts it to $5 if the officer does not see that individual, is that right? Or is not giving an in-person ticket?
Yeah, that's part of the...
It's a portion of it.
It's kind of a complicated thing. I don't know that we can adequately address your question.
I don't need to know right now, I just, what you're saying is what makes me wonder...
We've reviewed this multiple times.
That's, what Brooke is describing is the justification for why the general statute's limited to $5 in most cases. Now, having said that, there's a difference between, you know, addressing it on the criminal side versus the civil side and...
Correct.
Challenges associated with collecting the fee, in either case, that we could wrap ourselves around that question for probably a couple hours.
I'm fine. I just, it jumps out at me at $5. Thank you.
It's not, right, it's not a simple increase. It wouldn't be a simple decision to increase it, would be the quick answer.
Okay. Having heard this, then, is there a, we have a resolution on this to amend the village fee and charges schedule for the library? I think you have a motion, please?
Yeah, I move to approve the resolution amending the village of Pinehurst fee and charge schedule.
That's Resolution 2222, correct?
Correct.
So it's a motion by Pat Pazella. Is there a second? Second by Lydia Bosch. All in favor, say aye. It's aye. Any opposed? None? That motion carries. Audrey, thank you very much. Brooke, thank you very much. Move on to item number five. Jeff?
All right, next up, we've got Mark on a couple, on several topics, I guess three topics. The first is response to the council's directive to staff to go back and look at ways that we can intelligently invest in opportunities at the Harness Track in more robust ways or in accelerated ways in this fiscal year. And we have, we've done that, and there is a bit of a budgetary impact. It's not, you'll see, it's not that large. It's not that large because of, we've been able to take advantage of the roll forward from last year and funds that weren't expended last year, in addition to the $50,000 that came from the state in their allocation for capital improvements or equipment at the Harness Track. So I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, this is something we've been talking to you about for a couple of meetings over the summertime, and it's nice to have this very comprehensive report today, so please go into that and bring us up to date.
Yeah, it's been a topic of conversation, I think, since, towards the end of training season.
Yeah.
You know, every year, we identify certain projects that we'd like to do capital improvements on, facility upgrades. This year, the list was pretty long, obviously, based on some of the discussions that we've had. You can see the list of projects that were in the memo. These include upgrading the groom's quarters in Barn 14, replacing all of the paddocks on-site, except for one. We would demo and rebuild an office in Barn 3 that is pulling apart from the building. That one did require approval from Historic Preservation Commission, which I went to last month, so we have got that certificate of appropriateness for that. And then there's other drainage improvements. We're painting various barns and buildings. Had some water damage in the clubhouse, which is the track superintendent's office, so we would be repairing that. There was discussion about a different way to manage the animal waste on the site, so we're looking at building a concrete pad with some concrete blocks as sides... So we're looking at building a concrete pad with some concrete blocks as sides that we can push against. We've also been working with our contractor who hauls off that material off-site, looking at some different ways that we might be able to manage that. We just got a proposal from them for a different way to do that, so we've got to look through that. That would probably be something that we might see in next year's budget request as we look at those projects coming up. And then our staff has already done a lot of work on the roads down there, which was an area of concern as well. But we are going to have a contractor come in and finish out the rest of them as staff is preparing to get ready for the training season on October. So the total of all these projects that we bid out was $263,000. Current funds is $207,000 and that does include the $50,000 from the state of North Carolina. So we would need $56,000 in order to complete the rest of these projects. And if we get that approval tonight, all of our contractors are lined up and ready to go. Once I get purchase orders from Brooke, they'll be able to be on-site and they have all indicated that they should be able to complete most, if not all, of this work by the start of training season in October.
Mark, most of the projects here, not all, most of them were projects I think you had on a list of things to be doing in this fiscal year anyway, correct? So about 170,000 or so funds were set aside for that.
That's correct.
As a part of our regular maintenance and increasing maintenance and repair.
Every year, we paint barns, we renovate a portion of the grooms quarters, you know, kind of the direction we received, I think, back at the budget. Work sessions was instead of fixing a little bit, you know, bathroom here, a bathroom there, why don't we fix up a whole area? So that's what we focused on this year. Yeah, so a lot of this, the drainage improvements, those are things that we do, you know, on an annual basis, so. But it just takes a little bit more money to do the list that we had this year and we have another larger list already for next year that we would be ready to ask for as well.
But at council's direction, we ask you to consider other projects, as Jeff explained, and come up with a plan about those that would seem to be the best areas to put dollars into that we're going to get a return on based upon the work we're trying to do with the horsemen and the trainers and the accommodations that they have in the track area.
That's correct.
So that's why this increase has come along. It's a response to what council was very interested in seeing done and this is what needs to happen financially to make it work.
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else you want to report to the council? I want to take questions on that.
That's all I have. I know finances and ordinance prepared for the budget amendment, if you're so inclined.
Okay. Questions from council members? Thoughts? No, sorry, Lydia, please.
Thank you. And thank you, Mark, for this. Item, next to the bottom, construct concrete pad. I know you guys were giving some pictures of something Garth had recommended. Is this just going to be a different approach?
It's very similar, but instead of a poured concrete wall, these would be the blocks like you see if you've ever been to the concrete plant. They're about a four-foot long by two-foot high piece of concrete. That's a little more stable to push against versus a concrete wall.
Okay, so it sounds like it's the same concept, just different materials.
We feel it's just a little stronger.
Okay. The horse community is going to have to be thrilled about this, I would think.
I hope so.
Okay, are they aware of it yet?
I've talked with Garth some about some of the improvements and obviously, we've had horse shows going on on the facility. So they've seen and they're aware of the improvements to the paddocks that were taking place, so. And we do have, you know, an ex-trainer on-site who runs the horse transportation business and he was very excited to see the paddock work, so.
Okay. And it's my understanding there still will be a fundraising concert in December, the proceeds of which will go to the harness track, but that's to be worked out later. And last while we have you here, what is the status of rentals at the track this year? I know we've been struggling with rentals and can you give us an update on what the rentals are looking like right now?
I can only give you a forecast based on conversations that we've had with trainers. And I think I may have mentioned this in a previous meeting, we were hopeful to get to right around 200 stalls this year. We did have one trainer who has a personal family issue that's come up since then and they are not going to be coming back, it doesn't look like. And that's probably going to drop us down to about 170. If that happens, it's still a 30-horse or 30-stall increase from last year.
A what stall increase?
A 30.
Oh, that's...
We would go from 140 to about 170.
That seems significant.
And it's still, you know, up in the air. We don't count our chickens until they hatch and we actually have their concrete in deposit, but, their contract in deposit, but they are starting to come in now.
Okay, and if the one that we expected can't come, is it too late to try to get a replacement for that?
Oh, no, we still have two more recruiting trips coming up this fall. Track superintendent is going to the Little Brown Jug in Delaware, Ohio next week. And then there's the standard breed sale the first week in November and we'll be there as well.
Okay, so we're still looking at the possibility of full capacity? Possibility.
The max stalls, wasn't that like 230?
244.
Okay. Now, this is, this is great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
One item, I think if there's a formal process that exists, then maybe we should follow it. If there's not one, I think we should probably, once purchase orders are cut or et cetera, is alert the legislature that provided us the funds, that we've applied them to the action that they requested. So we're on record having fulfilled what they're expecting of us. And then obviously, a news release about this could be another way to convey to general and the public about it because it's a comprehensive approach.
We're required to give them a report on the scope of work.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Jeff, what was that?
We're required to give them a report on the scope of work.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Are there other questions of Mark with respect to the harness track funding? Seeing none, I believe we have motion number five.
I move to approve ordinance 22-12, amending the ordinance appropriating funds for operations of the village of Pinehurst for fiscal 2023 regarding revenues and expenditures of the general fund for the village of Pinehurst, North Carolina for harness track improvements.
That's a motion by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pizzella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously, Mark. Thank you very much for your leadership here and we'll keep in touch on the harness track. I think you're going to be with us here for several agenda items, so would you like to carry on or, Jeff, you want to say anything further?
No, go ahead, Mark.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're stuck with me for two more, sorry. The next item is the synthetic turf project at Cannon Park on Field One. We're seeking approval of the proposal from Field Turf USA to install that turf at Cannon Park. If you'll recall at our last meeting, there were some questions and concern that is that number the final number that was in that proposal in terms of the construction cost? We did go back and talked with them and they have agreed to a not-to-exceed price of 1.3 million plus some change, 1.303. And so they're willing to stick to that price, which was in the original agreement. There is a couple of additions to that. We did ask for the GMAC testing that we did not have in there before, so that is included in the proposal as well. Design was separated out. That cost is shown as $61,965. So that brings the total project cost to $1,364,463. The current budget contains 1.237 million, so in order for us to complete this project and the addition of the perimeter fence that we talked about last time, we would request a budget amendment in the amount of $145,000 so that we can move forward with this project. And finance, again, is prepared and ordinance to that effect.
This is all going to be at Cannon Park, right?
Correct. This is the large field at Cannon Park that's bordered by woods and rattlesnake.
Right. And I think we talked about this the last time, but just to make sure we all have it correct and the public as well, generally, in that space, remind us what's going to be covered and what isn't in that space by the...
In terms of use?
No, no, the area that's going to be covered by the turf itself, the turf.
It's, well, currently, it's a baseball, softball, kind of multipurpose field.
Right.
So it would be, you know, converted from dirt and grass to the synthetic turf material. It would have an infill material as well, which helps reduce the heat and also helps provide some of the cushion for the use on the site. It has a monitoring system for maintenance purposes. It will tell us when there are certain spots that have an accumulation of the infill material that need to be spread back out. And that's something that our staff can monitor and maintain accordingly or we have the option to contract with Field Turf for $2,000 a year and they will provide all maintenance on the site. So that's something that as we get into budget discussions for fiscal year '24, we would look at that and see if that's something that we want to propose.
If I may, Mark, I think what John is asking is the extent to which the synthetic turf will extend beyond the physical confines of the baseball field itself.
Yeah, it will go essentially to where the light poles are now. It'll go a little bit past that in order to accommodate our flag football fields. The area outside of that will remain grass and I would imagine that in future years, we will try to spruce up that area as well and do some additional landscaping, whether that's shrubs, flowers or just grass, maybe put some picnic tables, things like that out there. So all of that existing soccer and lacrosse use that is out there has been shifted to Wicker Park and also still down at the harness track.
Yeah, yeah. And I was, I saw the siding, I guess, all done now at Wicker Park near the splash pad.
Yes.
All that's done in that field is going to be used?
Soccer field opened back up on August 21st, so we have soccer, lacrosse, rugby. We have a lot of interest out there and the calendar is pretty full this fall and winter.
Now, earlier, in the earlier conversations on this and then again today, you had a cost-benefit analysis. Can you just talk us through a little bit of that so we all hear that, the public hears that as well? On the turf versus grass, that situation?
Yeah, the other thing that we looked at was the grass option, you know, do we go in and re-sod the whole field? And that was going to cost about $400,000 was the estimate that we had. But with that would also come some increased levels of maintenance, about $30,000 a year to replace sod in the high-wear areas and then additional fertilization, mowing, weed control, top dressing and aeration to maintain that field because it has such high use. That's kind of why they've gotten beat up so much over the years. So when we looked at those costs out over a 10-year period, and this would include replacement cost in year 10, the cost for natural grass was going to be $1.397 million over a 10-year period for installation and maintenance versus the synthetic turf, which was going to be $1.307 million. And how we got to that number was by not spending, having the annual maintenance for irrigation, fertilizer, the stuff that our staff is doing now, we're contractors, that would not include the $30,000 for sod replacement every year, which we would have asked for in the budget if we didn't have synthetic turf. And that also includes an offset from increased revenues where we would raise the price to rent the facility to help offset that cost a little bit. And that's certainly something that, you know, we would determine when we come back for the next fees and charges update, is that something we want to do or do we want to leave it where it is?
Meanwhile, we get a facility that we can, we can use more intensively.
That's correct. The rain yesterday, we had our first night of Coach Pitt's baseball, so there was a little bit of muddy areas that we had to play in and this will prevent that from happening. This will eliminate cancellations due to weather that happens earlier in the day.
I think I mentioned a couple of months ago that my only regret about going to turf is that kids can't slide into home plate in the lower and get the dust all over them and run to the dugout with a run scored. But anyway, they'll learn to slide on the turf itself there. And I think you said something about you'll have a little dust around.
Yeah, we put a little bucket of dirt for them if they want to get the uniform sturdy on the way home, so.
All right. Other questions of Mark with respect to this project?
Can you remind us, Mark, when is the completion date and play ball will be announced?
Yeah, if we get approval, we would wait till after our fall season is over before we would try to start construction. So November would kind of be the timeline when we would look to start the process of this. It would be completed mid to late February, which would be in time for our spring season, which would begin in March.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Other questions? Comments? Lydia?
I do. And I only have questions because, you know, with an expenditure this large, I felt like we needed to do every bit of due diligence we could, including the cost-benefit analysis. Thank you. And I know it's important, since our last meeting, you went back to some of the prior users of this ferry material and we got feedback from all of them, which was good. There are two things that I want us just to clarify once again. You know, we've heard reports of injuries. There will be more injuries, but I believe we've addressed that adequately, right, Dr. Morgan?
I feel it's more than adequately addressed, yes. There is no evidence of increased injuries on turf versus regular grass.
Okay, thank you. And another issue, and you might have mentioned it in your presentation, Mark, there has been concern that in the summertime, the stuff will get really hot. And I believe that was the situation with turf once upon a time. What is the situation now with turf like this in our climate?
A lot of that heat comes from the crumb rubber, which is the infill. That's why we proposed the Cool Play, which is a different type of material that does not put out the same heat. It's about 30 degrees cooler with the Cool Play than it would be otherwise.
Okay, so you're comfortable we're not going to have kids feigning from heat exhaustion out there because the turf is too hot?
I'm comfortable, yes.
Okay. You know, another thing we haven't talked about is what is the useful life of this? And at the end of its useful life, what happens?
Your warranty is eight years.
Eight years, okay.
Useful life is 10 to 12 years on average. So if it's properly maintained, we should be able to get to 10 to 12 years use out of this. And then at that point, you have to replace the turf.
Okay.
And that was built into our cost analysis. The cost to install or replace the turf after its useful life is roughly about $500,000.
Okay. And, well, I guess it's too early to tell now, anything can happen eight or 10 years, but can any of that be repurposed, recycled?
I've seen instances where turf fields have been removed and you see it sold on gov deals or things like that. You know, I don't know, I wouldn't want to recommend that, you know, not knowing what safety standards that there may be at that time. So I think that's...
Well, again...
Hate to see it go to the landfill, but...
There is a secondary market out there, but people aren't using it for athletic fields, they're using it for other oddball things.
And how can anybody say now what the market's going to be for that stuff eight or 10 years from now? But it's not going to, it's, the choice is landfill or repurpose or something, but...
Correct.
Also, something, and I did this in connection with our Parking Rec Master Plan, that discussion, but I went back and looked at our 2011 master plan, our demographics, and compared it to what we got at retreat last year. We have got a tremendous increase in children from five to 19. I've got, it's gone from 12% to 18%. And what that tells me is we have way more kids playing on our fields, which justifies the need for either more fields or more extensive use of the fields we have, which is, this is intended to do, give more extensive...
Correct.
Okay. But that was an important number to me, to see the increase in the number of kids we've had here since the 2011 master plan. Okay, now, I'm satisfied we have done our due diligence.
Okay. Just a reminder, oh, Jeff, please. Jeff Morgan?
Comments? First of all, I appreciate the cost analysis. I think that was very solid work looking at that. And I think it's evident that we have a system here that will be a little bit cheaper than regular grass and be far more effective in serving us. One thing that I will mention here is that I did go up to Ashboro where this company put in a field in McCrery Field, which is a baseball field. That's actually my original hometown. I grew up going to baseball games, McCrery Field. And dramatic improvement, number one, but number two, I still have an aunt and uncle and a cousin that live about 400 yards from that field and that's the neighborhood that my family is from. Anecdotally, talking with the folks, ended up there looking at the field, there is a tremendous aesthetic improvement and they were commenting on that. So one of the things we also have is that we're not discussing right now and there's really no way to put a monetary value on this, but I expect the field to be very similar to what I saw in Ashboro. So what we're going to expect to see in Cannon Park, from my opinion, is a tremendous improvement in the aesthetics.
Yeah. Jeff, thank you very much for that. Now, just a reminder, of course, we're being asked to use our savings account here, fund balance. I think it's an appropriate use. Our finance director has checked that out and we'll still be, we'll still be all right after this investment, but it is a wonderful investment and I think from all ways, it should pay us very handsomely over time. Obviously, Mike Newman has looked at all this contract back and forth, so we're all clear with him.
I don't know that Mike looked at this proposal, but this is a typical finance department review. but this is a typical finance department review, and the village managers, risk managers, look at all of this as it comes through that approval process.
Okay. Any reason that we should have Mike look at this, Jeff?
No.
Okay, fine. I think we need a motion on this as well, item number six.
I move to approve ordinance 22-11, amending the ordinance appropriating funds for operations of the Village of Pinehurst for fiscal year 2023 regarding revenues and expenditures of the general fund for the Village of Port Pinehurst, North Carolina for synthetic turf installation.
That's a motion by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second, please?
Second.
A second by Pat Pizzella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you, Mark, for that. Shall we move on to item number seven?
So tonight, we're seeking approval of the contract with McAdams Company for the update to the 2011 Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan that Lydia referenced earlier. The total contract amount is $54,717. I believe I mentioned at the work session when we talked about this before, we had roughly $45,000 budgeted for this. So this will require a budget amendment, but that would be on the staff level. It'll be less than $10,000. So, and we have those funds available in contingency to cover this. So once we get approval, we can kick off our efforts to collect data, go into the public input process. We would use the village's Pinehurst engagement site to solicit feedback as well as the surveys that are incorporated in here. We did amend the scope to include a touch point with council early in the process so that you would have an opportunity to meet with the consultants and make sure that if there are certain things that you would like to see included in this plan or considered as part of this plan, that we can do that, so.
Okay. Questions of Mark on this particular item? I have some, but go ahead.
Yeah, I was, can we bring up the contract? I had one question, I made a note when I was reading it. I think it's page 92, if I'm right, if I'm referencing the right page.
Which page?
That's next to my notes, page 92, Parks and Recreation. Is there such a page, or did I miss something?
Not a 92. I have a.
Patrick's probably referencing where it is in the overall agenda package.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. Well, let me, the topic I wanted to ask is, there's a section called Scientific Survey for $10,000. And I wanted to know how and who conducts that survey? Is it phone, online, in person? What's it going to tell us? What are the questions? And is it duplicative or a value added to the general survey that we're in the process of doing right now?
The company that would perform that survey is ETC, who does the village's community resident survey as well as the business survey. Questions have not been determined yet. Once we kick off, that would be something that we would work with the consultants on and certainly provide opportunities for feedback if there are certain things that you would like to see. I know some of the discussion has been, we want to make sure that the public and the residents are aware of potential costs associated with some of the things that might be in this plan. So that's something that we will incorporate. So we want to engage and get that feedback and also, you know, educate as well as we go along.
I'd like to get a, I think at the beginning of that, just to understand it better and.
Sure. What will happen is they will send us a list of survey questions that they have used in other communities. So we would be able to distribute those. And if there's something you like, something you don't like, we can adjust from there.
Okay.
In the document, they did indicate that they recommended using a combination of mail, internet, and phone as the modalities. But I understand that, you know, we have a decision to make on there, but.
Jeff, I couldn't, I couldn't understand you there. Could you?
In the document, maybe I know, get wrong distance away from her. They're recommending a combination of mail, internet, and phone. Actually, this was brought up here by Kelly, demonstrating, but it's in the document on there.
Yeah.
So those are the modalities.
Good.
Which is fifth, correct.
I do have a couple of questions, but others of Mark, Lydia?
I am, having, I've been doing this for three years. My belief is that our master plans have served us well. Bike and pedestrian, this, comp plan. It was interesting, though, the master plan that we have right now is a 20-year plan. We're only going to do a 10-year plan, which to me makes more sense. But was that, was that a decision to do a 10-year plan rather than a 20-year plan?
I think what you see, you know, throughout the industry is 20-year plans are too long. Too many things change within five to 10 years. So I think 10 years is becoming more of the standard now.
Well, I agree with that. And when I went back and looked at this one and saw it was a 20-year plan, it struck me as a mighty long plan. But no, I think the village is well-served by the master plans that we do.
Yeah, and we were able to check off a lot of those boxes from the 2011 plan. The vast majority of the items included in there have been completed.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
My questions are maybe a little bit different orientation. This plan so far is oriented, as would be expected, to kind of our physical facilities. Where are they? How good are they? How do we compare to others? All that sort of thing. How many programs we run, and how many people attend them, and what new programs we need to have. My question and my interest is this. What I don't see, and maybe it's captured here in some way, or could be, is this. I'd like to have, as a part of this plan process, be thinking about, what is it through Parks and Recreation we're trying to achieve? What are the goals that we have to meet the needs of Village of Pinehurst residents? What things are we trying to do to, you know, to look to the future? And what is our mission in Parks and Recreation? I'd like to have us think about that, and how do we, how do we carry that out? Now, I don't know, kind of looking through the contract, how that fits in. It may not. But if there's a way to capture that idea, if council members agree, then that's an aspect of this planning process I'd like to see us address. What is our mission? What are we trying to achieve? What are our, what are our goals in programming and exterior, interior activity? I don't know how the rest of the council sees that. We haven't really discussed that idea before, but maybe there's a comment or two, if you wish, on that.
You know, John, what that brings to mind is I think we have a wonderful park and recreation program, but, and I'm not saying they're on automatic pilot at all. But if they are on automatic pilot, maybe it's an opportunity to see if there's something that needs to be tweaked. You know, I think we've brought this up before. We've got some outstanding events down on the village green. We've got great programs. But in this entire mix that's under the park and rec umbrella, are there certain things that need, have a second look?
We'll learn a lot through this, you know, through this process of statistical kind of stuff. But my interest in addition to that is, what is it we're trying to achieve for the Village of Pinehurst residents? And are we doing that in this, in this way? What is our mission? Keep coming back to that, to that word. So that's what I'd like to see more of if others agree, so.
Jeff, did, Jeff Sandborn?
I think that's very appropriate. To me, it seems like, it seems that the start of the process would be engaging our residents and trying to understand what their vision is or what their aspirations are for our community with regard to parks and recreation programs, and then do some analysis on that and then get the council's buy-in on planned goals. What are we, what are we trying to achieve?
Jane, did you have a comment?
No, I hope we learned the visions and so forth through this process. And I hope that the consultant's able to provide us some good recommendations. Unfortunately, I don't find the terms of the contract to be reasonable.
Any other, any other thoughts, please, about my suggestion?
Well, I'd like to hear a little bit about the unreasonable aspects of the contract for a moment. But I agree with the importance of the residents input here. Residents need to feel at the end that their voices were heard. And I'd also like the consultants to take a little look at if any of our programs are unnecessarily competing with activities that are offered in the private sector, particularly any of our programs where there's a very small participation rate. So we can make some decisions about resource allocation and where to place an emphasis. That's all, thanks. But I'm just curious, which was the, I know.
So maybe there is a way to work in this idea of our mission. Jeff, with the, all right. So however we can accomplish that in writing and meet those objectives, and I'm happy to talk further to you about it, I'd like to see that kind of, that covered as we go forward.
I'll let the consultants know about that and make sure that we have opportunities to discuss that.
Thank you. And if I can join you in a call with them, would that be helpful? That'd be fine, whenever you like, Mark. Okay, so on this item, we are looking to approve this contract, though, with the understandings that we just, we just made. So that will be item number seven. And it's our motion. Or we won't have a contract.
Okay. I move to authorize that the mayor is designated enter into a contract agreement with McAdams Company in the amount of $54,717.50 to update the Parks and Recreation Master Plan for the Village of Pinehurst.
That's motion by Lydia Bosch. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Jeff Morgan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Excuse me? No. So that's four ayes and one nay. Thank you, Jane. That will move us on to item number eight.
Thank you.
Mark, I think you're all set now. Thank you very much. Jeff?
All right, thank you, John. Darren's getting ready up there. We'd like to continue the discussion about the Pinehurst South Small Area Plan and try to continue to work toward a potential adoption. I think we have a, we have a motion prepared for you if you, if you choose to adopt the plan tonight. But I don't, I don't know that we necessarily expect that to happen. But Darren has a presentation for you here to update you on where we are.
Good. Darren, you're getting your documents. Thank you.
Jeff Sandborn picking up from your comment while Darren's getting organized here. I think the feeling of at least some of the council is tonight is that we're probably not ready to approve something, but we're getting some answers to key questions that remain from the last discussion point on this. Darren has answered many of those over the past few days, and we'll go into those things tonight and seek some direction further on this. Darren, good evening.
Good evening.
So what you have just distributed.
What I just distributed.
Just glancing at it is a list of 35 different types of activities, businesses, whatever, that could go on. In the NC and OP, that's Office Professional, permitted use districts, right? Got your microphone there.
Can you hear me?
Not well. Put it up, get the next one.
Can you hear me now?
Better, thank you.
All right. So what you have is a list of uses that are allowed in the neighborhood commercial and the OP districts. And the reason why I handed that out to you is, you know, kind of the goal in this area, which is, you know, the major contention or some of the major concerns that we've had with this Pinehurst Small Area Plan with respect to the future land uses is this area south of Blake Boulevard. So the major zoning in that area is NC, Neighborhood Commercial, and Office Professionals. You can't hear?
I can't, I've been able to hear all night, no. Can't hear. It's.
I'm trying. So what you're showing, what I'm showing you here is the two, the two uses that are allowed, and there's 35 uses that would be allowed amongst both those two districts.
That's under current zoning as it's laid out.
Correct, that's an.
This could happen today if we didn't have a moratorium on it.
Correct. So I was just trying to give you an example, because we're not at phase two yet. So phase two is what the Planning and Zoning Board is currently undergoing, and I'm going to show you what we're doing. Is we, that is where we start looking at the lot standards. That's where we start looking at the types of uses, things like that. And I'm going to, I'll give you an example, which we're going to share on Thursday. But what I wanted to show is what, you know, what's allowed in these two districts right now in numbers one through 20, that's allowed only in the OP district. And then you go from 21 down to 35, and that's, and that's allowed in the NC district. So you can see, as this area, if it comes to, if it develops under the existing zoning umbrella, you have two, you know, two kind of sets of different standards with respect to the uses that are allowed in this one neighborhood. Now, if you turn the page.
Darren, before you go, I'm going to be real, question is not precise. One through 20, our activities could be done in OP district.
Correct.
But not, but NC can't, we wouldn't do that there.
Correct.
21 to 35.
No, one through 20 is allowed in both NC and OP. And then 21 through 35 is allowed in the NC district. And the reason that, why I'm keying on that is when we look at this area and we looked at it as part of the comp plan process, we wanted to create that mixed-use kind of walkable neighborhood. And if you combine, if you have the NC uses in there, the NC uses do create somewhat of a, of a, you know, a mixed-use neighborhood. You've got dwelling mixed-use, you've got general retail, you've got personal services. You've got all these lists of different uses, bars, taverns, nightclubs, that make up a mixed-use neighborhood. So, and the next part of this is if you go to page two. So you go to page two, and this is from our, from our lot standards. And this is where it starts to become a little bit more important because if you look at the NC and the OP, which in Pinehurst South are adjacent to one another, you can see we have two sets of different development standards within that area. So for the NC, the minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet, while in the OP, it is currently 20,000 square feet. And you can look throughout here that, my mouse, that there are different standards between the OP and the NC. So if we're trying to get some standardization within this, within this neighborhood, which is what we're trying to achieve with the regulating plan, the future regulating plan, this is, these are the things that cause me some concern if we're trying to look at developing and bringing this area together. So you have two sets of different standards. So that's, you know, that's part of what we, that's part of what's in the plan and the next phase of the plan would be to do the regulating plan and the, and the form-based code. So I'm just, this is just illustrating what can be, what can be permitted in there right now and what that development would look like.
Darren, may I ask a question? And I'd like to back up a step. I'm thinking, what's in there now? And so I have looked over at page 22. And that's current zoning.
Correct.
Okay, and it shows residential multifamily.
Mm-hmm, on the west, on the west side of NC 5.
And a big chunk of Neighborhood Commercial.
Correct.
Office and professional.
Correct.
So if we do nothing, this is the way it will be developed unless somebody comes in and asks for a zoning change.
If they need a conditional zoning change, correct.
Okay, but this is what, this is what we would be stuck with.
Correct. And one of my concerns is if you look at this section of the, of the, of the table, you look at minimum front yard setbacks, you have a minimum front yard setback of 25 feet in both districts, but that's a minimum. That's not a maximum. It's not a build-to line. So the whole goal with the form-based code is that we have, that form is established along a block, not unlike we have in the Village Center area. So that was the goal of this project, Jane, you don't, that was the goal of the project because it, because it follows through with the comp plan recommendation. Period, it does. So these are, you know, the concerns, you could have a parking lot sitting out in front of a building. That is not what the goal of the form-based code is going to be, or at least as, as it might be proposed, not to have parking lots between the front of the building and the, and the street line, things like that. So that is just kind of, I'm just giving you a background of what can be there now. And I'm going to show you what we're working to with the, with the Village Place Plan right now. And the one last thing, we've gotten into a little bit of a discussion on what's mixed-use, Ross Residential Development. Well, mixed-use. Well, mixed-use per our PBO is the development of a neighborhood tract of land, building or structure with a variety of complementary and integrated uses, such as, but not limited to, residential, office, manufacturing, retail, public, recreation in a compact, physical form. And then you go for residential development. And this is always in my mind what residential development is, is buildings for residents such as attached and detached single-family dwellings, apartment complexes, condominiums, townhouses, cottages, and associated outbuildings. So if you go back to this plan within the Piner South Plan, that's where this is showing that residential development. That's what it was indicating. So when the Planning and Zoning Board, when we made the recommendation to back out to nonresidential, it's backing out the residential classification in here in favor of having a... Allowing for mixed-use development as you see through box D, B, C, D, and E. So it's trying to replicate this land use and development pattern here down into the southern part of the planning area.
Well, this is where there's quite a disconnect because my understanding of Piner South, particularly on the east side of Route 5, south of Blake, is that it would be an office park. And it would not be a walkable mixed-use with residential thrown in there area similar to what we're looking to craft in Village Place. It would not be like Village Place at all. It would be quite different. And that, I think, is... First of all, it's always been my understanding of what it would be. Second of all, that it would be laid out like Turnberry Wood and not like a retail area where people are window shopping. And it would be quite different from that. And I think the whole idea that we have such a limited infrastructure in traffic capacity on Route 5, we don't need to be putting a mix of commercial and then residential on top of that. If you look at the entire small area, there's lots of residential. There's Quail Haven, and then everything on the... Or virtually everything on the west side of Route 5, south of Trotter Circle, is residential. And there's the cottages next to CCNC. So there is quite a bit of residential there, but I don't think we need to add dense rents, mixed-use residential on top of the commercial and pump up the density and have it be compact and all that kind of thing. I don't think that's what this area was designed to be under the comp plan. I don't think it makes sense, given the limitations of Route 5. And I don't think... I mean, I went back and listened to what the Planning and Zoning Board meeting in May. I didn't get the idea that people were interested in putting mixed-use in that area between Blake and Olivia. I just think it's... The vision is quite different from my understanding. And by the way, what are the asterisks on this list that we got today?
The special requirement. There's a special requirement in the zoning. But I do want to respond a little bit to that because if I reference back to the comp plan, the comp plan says for this particular area, the entire area, the land use recommendation is for mixed-use center stacked residential. It's clear. It says these areas are opportunities for future walkable mixed-use developments in proximity to existing neighborhoods, roads, and utility infrastructure. Concentrating development in these areas will help the village meet its goals of providing a wider variety of housing types, which it's not really doing that if it's stacked residential, and achieving the more walkable and bikeable nodes of activity. The mixed-use center would allow housing to be stacked on top of nonresidential uses. So that's from the comp plan. That was our guiding principle going into it. The whole, you know, if we talk about Turnberry Wood, we're talking... My idea was the character of Turnberry Wood. There's... Turnberry Wood has great architectural character within that developmental area. But the layout is like a suburban office park. So if that was a goal of this, was to create a suburban office park in this area, I can change... We can pivot and change, but that was not the goal based on what we had... What we were looking at from the comp plan. So I'm taking this directly from the comp plan. I'm looking at the comp plan recommendations.
The charts above pages 72 and 73 don't indicate that there's going to be a whole bunch of mixed-use apartments. They don't include those in the count.
You don't know.
Because I went and counted the little dots and everything. And the traffic analysis doesn't seem to include a bunch of apartments above the commercial.
You can anticipate that every building is going to be a mixed-use building, and it likely will not happen. And that's why a lot of that's just a... It's just a guess. They're doing it. They're running some basic numbers out, but you don't know it. That's why the next set... And you've been part of the Planning and Zoning Board meetings. The Planning and Zoning Board meetings, we're working on the Form-Based Code. You've seen what we're doing with the regulating plan. You've seen... You'll see what we're doing with the table of uses. So that's the next step in this. This doesn't... This informs the next step. This is what we use when we're going to make the zoning adjustments to implement this plan. But if something is so objectionable, like residential on the southern part of that, then we just take that out so we don't even have to consider that in the future. Really, what this is doing, like I said, is informing that next step. And I'm going to see if I can show that to you.
You know, Darren, while you're looking for that, I, you know, we got this at the last meeting, and thank you so much for giving us. You went through the comp plan, and you pulled out many, many pages of why what you've got in this Small Area Plan naturally flows from the comp plan. So this, what you're proposing here, is not a deviation from the comp plan. But something else, and Jeff Sandborn, you may have done this several months ago, is I believe you did an analysis that showed that this plan actually allows for lesser density than if we do nothing. Do you recall? You sent us a memo about that. So do you recall? Do you recall that work and conclusion about how this... The density would compare if we do nothing and if we do this?
I can't cite any specifics from that analysis, but I will... I can confirm that when we did the analysis, we found that, contrary to some of the narrative we hear in our community, the comp plan's recommendations result in... Potentially result in development densities that are less dense than current zoning allows. And this Small Area Plan results in development densities that are less dense than the comp plan in general. It's not true about every parcel within this small area, but in the aggregate, that's what we found.
So in the big picture, what we have here is not... The sky is falling. The density is gonna...
Yeah. It's natural. I mean, I think people, in their minds' eye, they're comparing this depiction of buildings to what's there now, which is empty ground, right? But that empty ground carries with it current zoning that has allowable uses. And that's what I think people aren't necessarily factoring into their personal analysis.
Okay. And also, I recall seeing in the comp plan repeatedly a desire for different housing options, which the cottage is satisfied. And Jane, for some reason, I think you seem to be really hung up on mixed-use. And mixed-use is a current acceptable way for people to live now. And I can accept that we have residential when you look at Quail Haven. It's a retirement village. We've got younger people. We've got younger people coming in the village who want different places to live, which is stated in the comp plan. There is... Wouldn't mixed-use provide, Darren, a more affordable housing typically? I mean, I don't know.
Well, it depends on unit sizes, things like that, and the cost. I'm not sure. It could potentially. You probably have to get up to a certain amount of density to make that happen.
To make it affordable?
What that point is, what that break-even point is, I do not know.
Okay. That's just an assumption I was making, but I have no basis for that assumption.
And those concepts, where we were trying to get that into the original plan that showed that residential in the south. Again, that felt... We had the discussion at Planning and Zoning Board. Planning and Zoning Board did not feel that was the appropriate land form in the southern part of Blake Boulevard. So that's the recommendation, is to not allow that. And the reason why that's important is when we get on to the next step that we are currently working with the Planning and Zoning Board, we're developing this regulating plan. So the regulating plan then starts to lay out within each of the blocks of Village Place. Each of the blocks is going to have a different type of building type within there. The red indicates active frontage. That means it's got to be like a storefront or some type of shopfront. And so this is the next stage of Piner South. And this is where the zoning changes occur.
That Village Place we're looking at?
Yeah. That's Village Place.
What do you mean it's the next step of Piner South?
If we approve this plan, at some point, it gets to a regulating plan in Piner South. What you're looking at is not a regulating plan. We regulate off the plan.
All right. I have a few questions and points. Just to recap where we are, so this just didn't start a few minutes ago. I guess it was four or five months ago we were presented with these small area plans from the consultants. And they gave us two plans, Village Place and Village South. They didn't want to come here and talk about their plans, but nevertheless, this council, in a four-to-one vote and making a few changes, adopted the plan for Village Place. And I thought the Village Place Plan was pretty thorough. I mean, I voted for it. And then we went to Village South. And this plan is much more disappointing than the earlier one. The consultant guaranteed for sure that it would be a traffic disaster. That was what they... They just laid that out in black and white. Now, we're talking about Highway 5 here, which is our big traffic problem to begin with. So that is an immediate sort of tap the brakes as to what we do around here. When we last met on this in August, I thought we came up with some general criteria, which I thought we would sort of be getting to, to decision-making, which talked about, according to my notes, we were going to have a height limit on the buildings. We were going to have... We're going to rule out the possibility of that development along Monticello. We were going to clarify this continual semantic non-resident, whether it means non-residential decision. We were going to have some parkland set aside for a ball field with unnecessary parking. And we talked about a greenway, walkway path that would help connect Village South, which is a little isolated from the rest of the village, so that the community can be interconnected. We talked about a lot of desirable aspirational ideas of what we might like to see there. And I think, if I recall, one of the things I was hoping to do is get to be able to vote yes on something along those guidelines. But I feel like what's being proposed is a lot of what-ifs and maybes and rather than some little more firmer guidance around this. And that leaves me in a quandary. I'm just... I'm not in a rush to vote tonight. A couple of weeks ago, I figured I'd be here to tee this up, but fill in what I'm missing. Because I think the residents are a little confused also. The few that talk about Village South are not clear of where we're headed there. There is a lot more clarity in Village Place.
I think that's what we're trying to get at. And we have... There have been no clear directions on which way you want to go other than the recommendation that the Planning and Zoning Board made on the land use for the southern part, to back that out and retain the original comp plan mission. But some of these other things, like building height. Building height is not determined by this plan. Building height is determined by the regulating plan. That's where, because what happens is that... Here. I'll go back to the... I'll go back to this, if I can get it. Everyone... So the building height is within the regulating plan. So each of those blocks has a maximum, a minimum, a maximum building height. So that is where we start to propose those changes when we actually do the regulatory changes by implementing whatever gets approved here. It gets implemented as part of the zoning, as part of the updated zoning layer or updated zoning requirements. We're not there yet because I don't have anything proposed because there's no... I'm not getting... You're not giving me... I'm getting nothing on the plan in this area, so I can't come to any conclusion with what to recommend in that area. And that's where I'm...
Well, the five items I mentioned a moment ago. If we were to adopt them as general guidelines to P and Z, would that be appropriate? And would that be a firm message? I don't want to have the feeling that, as a council, we're recommending something, but that it's so... Has so many gaps and holes in it that our recommendations in the end are not, you know, taken as seriously as I'd like to see them.
They will be taken seriously because what will happen is, whatever happens with this plan, it's happening with... It's happening with... It's happening with the Village Place Plan. You made certain recommendations with respect to the Village Place Plan. We are following through on that. We'll follow through the same thing on Piner South.
Village Place Plan, I follow it clearly. Okay? I got it. I'm not making a connection with this.
Patrick, go ahead.
And this one, why are there two plans? Why are there two plans?
It's showing two potential...
What does that mean?
It's showing two potential outcomes. With this particular plan, you see this one, this shows attached residential. This one shows single-family residential. It's just showing two potential scenarios. It doesn't set the next phase, which again is the regulating plan.
Which will come back to us.
None of this makes any sense to me, I've got to say. What are we approving if we're not approving anything? And yet we have to approve something.
I think we're approving a direction on here.
It's not one thing or another. There's two plans because we don't know which one it's going to be. And, you know, I just, I don't know.
Was the same for Village Place.
No, it wasn't the same for Village Place.
There were two...
There was.
Village Place laid out two options as well.
First of all, there's only one plan. But second of all, this plan has plenty of residential in it. I don't think we need to double up and put a whole bunch of additional residential on top of our commercial because we have not enough infrastructure in the form of traffic capacity on Route 5 to serve a scrillion new houses, a huge amount of density, doubling up the density. It doesn't work. I mean, what the traffic analysis says on page 64, 5, 6, whatever, is that there are something like 20,000 vehicle trips per day on Route 5 now. And if we do the high-density versus the low-density, it's going to be either 11,000 or 12,000 new vehicle trips. That's an awful lot of vehicle trips, particularly when you consider, if you look at the chart on the top, which says this is how many residential units and how many square feet of commercial and how many square feet of retail, et cetera. They're not including mixed-use on top of the commercial. So that would be even more. And it doesn't make...
Jane, you're making the assumption that that's going to increase the density.
Well, I'm not making an assumption. I'm looking at what's in the plan and counting what's shown on the picture and comparing it to what's in the chart. I can tell they didn't include it.
Okay. I think when you say you can tell, that's called an assumption. And you're making the assumption that you're going to increase the density in the plan there. And we've already had a discussion on there that the density is not necessarily going to increase with this. I do recall that conversation last month that we had. The other thing on this is that, when we're talking about the traffic patterns on here, what are the traffic patterns going to be if we do nothing? You're going to have an increase.
You have to have a plan.
I, I totally agree.
I just don't like this plan.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry you don't like this plan.
Because I think that's too much of a muchness.
We can spare wheels.
So let's pick one and then work on it and get it to the point where we're comfortable with it.
Okay, well, I, I will tell you that.
That whatever plan we adopt is something that's going to be able to function with the infrastructure capacity that we have. The DOT is not going to widen Route 5 from Blake North to 211.
Jane, other than stopping anybody from building anything in this, how are we not going to overwhelm the infrastructure for our roads?
I'm sorry, what?
Other than not allowing anyone to build anything in that current land, how are we going to stop overwhelming the current infrastructure that we have for the roads?
Well, Jeff, on that point, which is one of the points I addressed to Darren yesterday, and you were kind enough to reply to those, it was the issue of residential, but then the issue of infrastructure. So on your point, I'm, I'm, I'd like to know more about what the capacity of Highway 5 is. It's not a static, and we don't, we're not necessarily at it now. But that is one of the considerations here, of what uses we want to have, especially on the east side of Highway 5, whether there's residential there or not, because that does impact the volume of traffic as, as compared to other uses that might have a less impact. That, I think, is the core of the infrastructure point.
I, I don't disagree that that is a core of the point we're coming down to, okay? And it was somewhat of a rhetorical question, because you're going to overwhelm it. Right now, I think it's already getting close to being overwhelmed. We've talked about this before. The traffic has to be addressed. And I mentioned this last month, all right? There's no question that has to be done. What you also have right now is a small area plan that's looking at giving a direction. It's a simple step forward, much like we had previously. We are not signing a blank check here. What we're saying is this is the direction we need to go. We still have the ability to amend that. That's been addressed numerous times from Darren. Yes, you've got a couple of different options to look at. Planning and Zoning Committee has already addressed one of these. Once again, it's not a blank check on what we're going. The problem we also have is that currently, if it is developed the way it's currently zoned, we are not controlling what is going on. So we do need to make a decision as to what direction it's going to happen and give them some, some, uh, planning aspects for this. I also concur with Darren in the aspect that he has followed what the comp plan is saying. So this does support that. In my personal opinion, the Planning and Zoning Committee recommended one that seems reasonable for us to move forward. We're not signing a blank check, we're simply giving the next step to move forward with. That is reasonable to me. We also need to all, to make sure this council addresses traffic issues, because it's coming one way or another. Because when I say stop the building, that's called illegal. All right? It's going to be developed. You're going to have people come here. You started this whole meeting talking about the growth that's occurring in Greensboro and Ashboro and the different things that are happening. You're not going to stop growth from coming into this area. But managing it is what we need to do from this council. And this is a step in the management process. So I am ready to move forward on giving the next step, understanding we're not signing a blank check. I think all the stuff that Patrick brought up about heights and things like that going to the Planning and Zoning Committee is perfectly appropriate. And, and, and to make sure it fits within the character we have in Pinehurst. So I, I support that. But that's the next step on there.
Are we, you know, choosing between two plans? Or are we going to settle on one? Is it, would we move forward by eliminating one and just focusing on one? I'm trying to figure out a path, a path here, and I don't see it.
Well, the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation takes, takes care of it. In both the high ten, in both the low scenario and the high scenario, it takes this pattern. And the reason you're seeing the boxes on it, boxes A don't create the future. That is, it's illustrative, illustrative. And we've said that several times. It shows a possible future. It doesn't dictate that that future is going to occur. It just shows this would be a potential land use pattern. So when we get into developing the regulating plan, you see this, this is a non-residential development pattern, even though it may be mixed use. If we start plugging in areas over here, or development comes in, go, we want a development pattern like this, a non-residential, non-residential development pattern over here, we'd look to the plan and go, no, it doesn't make sense. We didn't approve it that way. We're not going to approve it. So that's kind of, that's why, you know, we're seeing this as an illustration of how the land use could come together. Now, if we, if we fall back to the, the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation, it changes this land use in this area. It flips it out in both sets of the plans to this type of, to this, the B, C, and D land use pattern that you're seeing there. So these go away. That's the marching orders. These go away, and they become, and they become this. So it takes, from that standpoint, it takes care of that concern. It doesn't take care of the, the mixed use concerns unless you tell me, you direct me, you don't want any mixed use in this area.
Could I, could I just, this whole mixed use thing, a different perspective? I don't agree with the, the assumption that increasing allowable uses increases density or traffic. At the end of the day, the regulatory plan that's adopted is going to allow for a certain number of square feet of floor space. And whether it's used for residential, or office, or retail, it's all going to generate traffic. I will say that I, my hunch, though, is that the extent to which that allowable square footage that's in the plan is used for residential, instead of retail and other commercial uses, is going to reduce the, the amount of traffic. Because of the relative density of, you know, an apartment might have one or two residents with cars, right? But that same square footage can drive, can drive a whole bunch of commercial traffic. I've made the observation in the past that residential development, in a grand scheme, creates traffic, right? Because that's where the, the owners of the cars are. But it's commercial development that concentrates traffic. So the more residential you have here in lieu of commercial, the lower your traffic impact is going to be. That's my perspective.
The lower volume of traffic, that's what you're saying. To the degree we have residential.
Summer of trips.
Of various kinds, it's lower trips.
More residential versus, instead of more commercial, is going to result in less traffic. And that's before you even factor in the internal capture that happens with mixed use development. Those people that live there are going to accommodate some of their life pattern needs with the commercial activity that's right there as well, instead of having to drive across Pinehurst to go someplace else.
Well, this is why we were talking about having office uses rather than retail uses, because an office use doesn't generate visitor traffic.
Well, look at the, look at the allowable uses in office professional. Those aren't all, those aren't all quiet little office buildings that have five employees and.
Wouldn't, wouldn't we narrow these? Isn't that sort of the point of what we're trying to do? Is to narrow the zoning and tailor it to what we're.
Which is what we're doing with Village Place right now.
I'm sorry, Darren.
Which is what we're doing with Village Place right now. On a block by block basis.
Jane, are you saying keep the current zoning and just limit the uses? And disregard this completely? Is that what you're saying? Because you said something, just narrow these uses. So I, I'm not understanding what you're saying. We would only narrow these uses if we kept the current zoning. So is that your suggestion?
Yes.
Okay, and I, you know, I want to go back to Patrick's list of five, because I don't recall directing staff to incorporate those. But Jeff Morgan, you just said something, and you said something about process. And process is another thing that's instilled in us from the beginning. This has all been a process, starting with the comp plan, and then the small area plans. And I think, I think we've all struggled with what a small area plan is. It's not, like Jeff Morgan, it's not the blank check. It's a step in a direction to do something here that is preferable to what is there now, which I believe would lead to the hodgepodge development, and staff has said would continue, would continue to have traffic issues. So to keep this, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand the objections to this. It's been a part of the process. Planning and zoning has been through it. Small area plans are amended every, I think you said, ten, fifteen years?
They're shelf life, it's eight to ten years.
Yeah. So you look at the current zoning and go, man, this current zoning is not, to me, is not acceptable, even if you whittle it down. So what's the alternative? And, you know, Patrick on your list was a ballpark, and I, I don't, I don't think it's the role of council to decide where to put ballparks, and maybe we disagree on that, but.
Let me just interrupt there. I thought a ballpark was an absolute, positively going to be included here.
Absolutely.
And if it's not, then, then, then I'm not going to go forward. I can tell you that right now.
And I think.
Village South is a neglected area of the village of Pinehurst. There's not a lot of facilities there for kids and other, and neighbors to do stuff. There's not a lot of parks. It's not like the rest of the village. And a ballpark is important.
I think we, we did some analysis very early on in this process that led us to believe that the topography does not allow for a ballpark.
And Jeff, I don't know if that meant it needed more land, but also there are two other things that come to mind. Number one, Park and Recreation Master Plan is being upgraded. But also, staff has said that you typically need desirably more than one park, because parents come with two children that play. It's just to build a ballpark anywhere was not the recommendation of staff.
I'm using the term ballpark generically, but I thought we, I thought we always included that as being in this Village South plan somewhere.
I think the compromise was what you show, what's shown in this plan, which is an open green space.
Yeah.
Village Green South.
Not defined, it's, it's more of a neighborhood park.
Yeah, it's not a ballpark.
Than a ballpark.
It's a neighborhood.
On your standing, Pat, though, are you talking specifically a baseball park?
No, I wasn't. I was talking in a generic term. I thought there'd probably be a, a park with, maybe a ball field. I, I, I wasn't getting very specific.
But the open space, whatever it is.
Yes.
As ballpark or a recreational park. I think we feel is important, is important to have in Pinehurst South, because there isn't anything like that there now, and it should be into the future.
That's what I, yes.
There's a whole detail on page, on page sixty-two of a park plan. That's, that we, that we added based on one of the public workshops, number seven, and I don't have it pulled up, but they are showing a plan with an outdoor fitness area, lawn, community gardens, multi-age playgrounds. So yeah, it was thought out into this.
That was really there to accommodate the residential development that was put there, though.
But Darren.
It really fit as well if it's going to be all office professional or neighborhood commercial.
I recall, and of course, we've been looking at this for a while, but I recall that you went to some trouble after listening to public comment to build this in there, to put H into this plan. It wasn't there until you put it there based on public comment. Is that my, is my recollection correct?
It got added on, that's correct. This, this park concept to this level, there's always going to be some type of connected green space, and you can see that in, in various, in various areas of this. But there was never one large central park area that was planned until we had those comments from Public Workshop number two. That's when we went back and said, can you do, develop a detailed plan for a park in that area? And that's what they came up with, just in concept.
So they took the residential development that was there previously, they pushed it all to the perimeter and, and created this open space.
Yes.
Part of the problem with that, too, is that we're showing the park. We have to, if we really want something like this to happen, then we have to figure out a way to actually make it happen, because we can't just zone it for a park and make a park happen.
I understand.
We have to either incentivize it somewhere or acquire it somehow.
And that, and we've had some conversations about the cost of.
All right, that land.
Yeah.
I still seriously don't understand the two plans. I, I really don't. How can you have two different plans?
Oh, is it, but, but Darren, can you respond to that? I mean, whatever way you, you think is.
It's showing two plans for two different types of densities in the, you can have two plans. It's what you, it's what you end up adopting as, in the zoning and the regulating plan. Your zoning could allow both for, so if you look at this plan, look at this one, this shows the attached, right? It shows a single family attached pattern. This plan shows a single family detached pattern.
Yeah, I can see the differences between the two plans. But, but what, when would we be adopting, the one or the other, if not tonight?
You're not adopting, you're not adopt, this all requires zoning changes to occur. That is where we develop, that's where we're working on that form-based code and the whole regulating plan and the table of uses that will be, that will be adopted with that.
Form-based code isn't about the uses. Why, why do we need a form-based code in order to pick between high density and low density?
We still need a, we still, we still need to develop lot standards, we still need to develop all that. So you're, you're getting, you're getting into the nuts and bolts that this plan doesn't actually get into. It's the follow-up, it's the zoning updates that update it.
Maybe it's, maybe it's fair to observe that, and this is, along the lines of some of the comments that have been made, this is, this is a step in the process.
Process.
And the regulating plan is another step in the process. Ultimately, the council is going to adopt new, a new zoning map for the, both these areas, and the form-based code that supports it. That's where you will be whittling down the uses and other considerations that you're talking through right now.
This, this is an example of Village Place. This is the table of uses in Village Place. So this is what we're going to start working on. And you can see, what we've taken is every single use that's in our, that's in our use table, and what we've put is an X, what, how that use is allowed in the core area. So as we start to go through here, we go, well, in that core area, which is that area around the brewery, do we want to allow for single family uses in that area? So this is where we start peeling back those, those types of uses that don't meet the, the development objectives in the core area, or in lower Rattlesnake, or in upper Rattlesnake. So those are, that's the next step in the process. That's where we're going. None of that was in the actual Village Place plan. The Village Place plan is informing this, this next step in, in the process.
Darren, if we.
So, right here. So that, that table I just showed you aligns with what you see here.
I think that everybody has a, a key issue, or what's, what's the key turning point here? To me, and speaking a bit to what Jeff Morgan was talking about on, on volume, to me, I think what we want to try to do is to manage the traffic volume as best we can, to minimize the traffic volume on Highway 5, as best we can from the decisions we make on what's going to happen on the east side and the west side of Highway 5 in Pinehurst South. So I had asked the question in an email about what do we know about what is the capacity of Highway 5? And I'm, you had about as good a response as we could have at this point, but I don't know if that's something we ought to pursue a little further, which may lead us to believe that this kind of mixed use or some other kind of use is the best solution for the outcomes we want to have for, for Highway 5. So is there, we, we're not able, I think, to get to the, to the concept that I have very well by transportation studies and these sorts of things.
Because everything's generic right now. The only, the way you can do a TIA is, the, the most effective way is if you actually have a known use, and then you, then you'll know by going to the IT guide, what that use is going to generate from a traffic standpoint. And you can have a TIA, you can potentially have a TIA requirement based on a, a certain size of, of a structure. But with this, I mean, you don't know how many mixed uses. You don't know what types of different offices are going to be in here. So until you get to those actual nuts and bolts, it's hard to, all you know is that there's going to be trips added to Highway 5. The level of service is level of service D during those, during the, during the peak times of the day, and that's not going to get any better. At least going north, going south, it may get better when they add the five lanes going south. But going north into the village, unless we potentially get that, the right lane, the right turn lane in the Morganton to get, to get rid of some of that traffic, you really, you're not adding capacity. So the only way to, the only way to improve is to take, is to move some of that capacity and improve other, other out. and improve other, other outlets, like, like the, what we've talked about with, with the traffic circle, like we might have talked about with the Western Connector, and looking at, imagining some of the, some of the land uses within this area.
So with the, with the two plans, is there a way we could come up with some reasonable answer to what, what the, what the traffic volume differences would be of one versus the other? And maybe we prefer the one that has the less impact, whatever that, whatever that use, mixed use becomes of the properties?
I mean, the major...
Does that address some of your thoughts?
I think it's fair to assume that the low-density option has a lower traffic impact than the high-density option.
Well, but, but maybe yes, maybe no, because to the point you, you made, residential has one set of implications, commercial has another.
But they both allow that.
I think that what, the low-density option is really related to, darn it, this mess.
The one you have right on the screen now?
That's the one I have, that's the one I have on the screen right now. And where are you going to see the, you see the major difference in here?
Now, that, and that option is a single-family detached?
Yes. The other one you'll see is, and this, this...
On the other side of the road, it's more multi-attached.
No, this one, in the low-density, it's showing, it's showing more single-family in that area, even though it's zoned for multiple family in the low-family option. This shows some more of that, shows a mix in, across the street, and it's showing single-family attached on the east side. If we change to the planning and zoning board's recommendation, and this all becomes potentially commercial, the only real change, applicable change between the two plans would be the land use on the west side of the highway. And we can have some numbers run, I just, you're running numbers based on, it's a, it is a wild guess. I mean, you're, you're looking at it, you're going, this is how many units you can get in here, this is about the trips, we don't know what the exact, we don't know what the exact use is, so we don't know what the trips are. The other thing that we, that I want to come back to on the mixed use, we're assuming that every single building within this area is going to develop as a mixed-use apartment development. I'm not seeing, you're not seeing a lot of that happening in the market. I don't know of too many even in Southern Pine, so just, if you, if you think that every one of these buildings is going to become a mixed-use development, I just, from a market perspective, I don't see that happening.
Let me ask you something about dormers.
Jane, if we were to focus then on this option, the one that was suggested by the planning board, would that help you and maybe help the rest of us in, in making a decision? If, not tonight necessarily, but getting us down the road here about what kind of uses we want to see, and is that the one that seems to have the least amount of impact on Highway 5?
And I have one point on that I can add. We could get this down to one plan. If you want one plan, that's it. Tell me what the recommendation is, and we'll go there.
I was just going to suggest, I mean, why can't, if the council necessarily wants to lessen the impact on Highway 5, might an option be for the council to specify the low-density option?
Downside to that, Darren?
I'm sorry, Lydia, what was your point there?
He says, is there any downside? And he was getting to doing what Jeff suggested, and Darren was going to answer that question.
Downsize what?
To the low-density option. The downside to that is you're potentially, on the west side of the highway, you're also downzoning these areas that are zoned for multiple-family development right now.
It might be problematic, is what you're saying.
Yes.
You're downzoning into single-family.
That would come out in the implementation, in the regulating plan, so...
Downzoning, which is a problem.
I'm just saying that that's the potential downside, is that, yes, you'd be downzoning this to something that's not RMF.
And that becomes a problem when, when the, we approve the new zoning maps?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I know there's interest right there in that, right in that area for multiple-family at this time.
All right. So the low-density, low-impact allegedly on Highway 5 is the plan we're looking at on page 73 of the, of the plan, I think it is, right?
72 is low-density.
It's 70, isn't it 73?
73 is high-density.
No, that's right, 72.
73.
72.
Alternately, I wonder if, if this is, you know, another option that would avoid that controversy might be to specify that you want the low-density option west or east of Highway 5 and the high-density option west of Highway 5.
West of Highway 5, as I have driven through it, is, it's attached, there's a single-family, there's attached, it's quite mixed in that area.
It is mixed.
Right. So it would be a natural continuation of that, of that use to allow that to happen on the west side of Highway 5.
I believe so. With the exception of, you know, some of the, some of the frontage along 5 where you have the commercial, where things are zoned.
Yes, yeah, 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 the commercial understood on the, on the Highway 5.
The single-family attached houses, what are the size of those lots, or we don't know?
We don't know, it's just, it's the concept that's single-family attached. So a single-family attached is probably 25 to 30 feet wide, something like that, if you're looking at, at a traditional townhouse.
Single-family attached sounds like an oxymoron.
It's not.
Townhome, right?
It's, it's, it's a townhouse that's on a separate lot. They're on separate lots. So they're separately...
A lot line type of thing.
Yeah, there's a lot line. Also called zero lot line.
Okay, so your, the concept would be zero lot line, not necessarily two or three townhouses in a block.
Like Cotswold.
Like Cotswold, like Laferay, those are all on, on single-family lots. If it wasn't on a single-family lot, then it's going to be, it would be, probably would, it might fall in an apartment category, because it'd be one building. These are all separate units.
So if we follow this idea of having maybe the high-density on the west side and the low-density on the east side of Highway 5, what, what's going to, what's the residential component of the east side? It's going to be single-family detached, correct?
Unless you're adopting what the planning and zoning board recommended, and that would specify that...
There'd be no...
It would only be the multi, the multi-use.
Yeah. They said, yeah, they said non-residential, but that does include multi-use, multi...
Mixed use.
Yeah, mixed use.
Thank you.
Well, mixed use includes residential...
Yes.
As a second floor.
It doesn't have to, but it can.
On the second floor of a building, right?
It doesn't have to.
Not townhouses.
No, correct.
Not attached, not, all that residential component.
That's correct.
Is the upper story of what I think we would all see as a, as a maximum two-story limit in this whole area.
Correct.
All right, all right.
And really, where that comes into place somewhat is, you see this area south of, in this area, we're around our net, so you see our, our net, we're showing, we're showing some attached land uses in there that would just flip it out to, darn it, this landform.
Darren, let me ask you something about dormers.
Single-family.
You have a two-story building with an attic and a whole bunch of dormers, doesn't that become a three-story building?
Depends on the height that's within...
So what are you proposing for dormers? Are you, are you turning two stories into three stories?
A three-story building is a three-story building, a two-story building is a two-story building.
I think we, our codes tip, we don't specify...
The height thing, is it?
It's the building height that's...
Height, not the number of stories or the attic, yeah.
Makes a difference.
Which is 35 feet.
If it's a, a story is a story. If it, if it has a certain amount of height, for, for ceiling height, have a certain amount of windows, things like that, that's what, that's what helps make a story. Just because of the, by very nature of just having a dormer there doesn't make it, doesn't, doesn't make it a story, because a dormer can be an attic.
This is a case in point of one of the things that we need to be, need to address in our regulating plan and the ultimately the codes that are adopted, but our current codes allow up to 35 feet, and that can be a flat-roofed building. You can put three stories on that.
Current codes actually, if you go down to other places, we can go up to 50 if it's a village mixed-use area. But Jeff's right, for the NC and the OP, it's 35 feet.
Now...
But if you don't allow the flat roof, then you're forcing that building to be a two-story building.
So at what point in the, in the process would we make the specifications about heights or no flat roofs, just for example?
How many stories of living space?
That's a step after this, right? When you get into form-based codes and all that, right? Okay.
It has been at those meetings, Pat. We've, we've been doing this as part of, as part of developing the regulating plan for Village Place. We've talked about these, we've talked about these issues. It's on the regulating panel, I just showed you. We spent, last planning, planning and zoning board meeting, we spent three hours talking about architectural standards, which talked about roof, roof types and things like that. It's already, it's in, it's in here. It's, it's in the form-based code, it's in the architectural guidelines, so it is there.
I had made the comment many months ago when I was first introduced to the form-based codes, that some of us are reading into it a cure for both male pattern baldness and obsess, obsessing. So I just don't know how it solves everything, but I, you know, to me, it's like taking it on faith to a degree.
We are not doing a true form-based code. As, as Jane had indicated, true form-based code really kind of takes out uses. We're doing more of a hybrid code because we are going to control uses within both of these areas.
Okay, so where are we?
Back to the point here, yeah, thanks, Lydia. Back to the point. Pat, if we don't have residential on the east side of Highway 5, okay, what would be the need for a park? In other words, are we, are we, are we comfortable putting a park?
I...
It might be in an area that doesn't have residential, because there's going to be a lot of residential on the west side, but maybe that park we have been talking about, whether it's ballpark, recreational park, whatever...
Parkland.
...fits some sort of residential component on the east side of the road, as long as, and you promised me this, Darren, as long as that is the low-traffic-volume impact on Highway 5, as nearly as we can project. That's, again, I come back to the, the consideration I think a lot of people have in their minds on this is, what's the traffic impact on Highway 5 going to be? So we need to be as smart as we can be and get as much information as we can about what's the lower, lowest impact. Jeff Sanborn has repeatedly, for some time and again tonight, made some suggestions about your, your feeling about that, or your, the data that you may have looked at in some, some other place, about, about that impact, so...
I can give you a whole host of IT things that, that show what each type of use traffic anticipates traffic generation, but until we actually know, we know that residential is going to probably develop, is going to generate less trips than commercial, office than probably could generate less trips than retail. It's just the way the, where the data is going to come out, but until we know what's actually going to be here, the only thing that you can do is say, oh, we want residential over here because it generates less traffic, or we don't want retail in this area because it generates more traffic, we want all office in this area because it generates a lot less traffic.
Would, would a next step then be, let's, maybe we have some agreement here, to do the low-density plan on the east side of the road, right? And at the next meeting, you could, maybe we could explain a little bit more about some of the impact of that, just focus on the traffic impact, what we think would happen, and what we, what we think we know about when the plans of DOT to expand or do other improvement features to Highway 5, when that's going to happen and how that might help us a little bit on this.
I think that advances the ball. You asked a question a moment ago, and I didn't get a chance to respond. My concern about having some parkland here goes to the, the idea of that Village South is sort of neglected about that, and I'm not going to be insistent on a major league ballpark. I'm just saying that we, I think we need to do something in Village South so that those residents there have some of the same type of facilities, they can't be identical, that the rest of our residents enjoy. They, they can't commute there to every place easily. Kids can't ride their bikes there and get to Cannon Park like they can from other areas. It's just not as accessible, so...
And what I think that means, based upon Jeff's comment about topography, is that the kind of park that might end up there is not a playing field park because of the leveling of it, but it's, it's a walking park.
Just an open space, you could have a playground.
Yeah, yeah, it's that kind of thing, where topography's not going to...
You typically have that in a residential setting, so going back to your other point about what, you know, whether or not ultimately...
Topography can be changed. I mean, it's not...
Whether or not you adopt the planning zoning board's recommendation and change this from residential in the south on the east side of Highway 5 to commercial.
Jeff, Jeff, that's my, my question, because planning and zoning has said no residential in here, but the low-impact plan has proposed single-family detached homes, which is residential. So that is contrary to what PNC had recommended.
That's right. But I, I think that overall, you're going to have a lower traffic impact if that's residential versus commercial.
We know there'll be traffic impact, but I thought Darren just sort of explained the cascading system, if it was Darren, I...
Level of service.
Of, of, the level of service, the traffic lingo, of that, where retail is, where office professional is, where residential is.
You could lay a table out to show that to you.
I have a table.
Yeah.
I have a table that shows that.
So there is in that food chain, something that is the least likely to make too much of an impact on traffic, as opposed to something that is more likely to make.
Right, right.
And so...
The least likely, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, Jane, does that help us then focus on one plan as opposed to others? And we'll have a debate about what's going to be in, in that plan with the various uses, but I think that maybe focuses us down then to a plan that we can concentrate on and try to come up with the best final result and recommendation.
That would be helpful. Be, be helpful to me if we ended up with one plan as opposed to two. And it would also be helpful to me to understand that we were doing the best we could to address the traffic that we would be designing to stay within as most, best we could, the capacity of traffic that, infrastructure that we have.
Yeah.
And I'm not there yet, but, but if we can work toward that, that would be very helpful.
All right. Now, when you say two plans, though, I'm looking at it this way. The one plan we're focused on is density on the west side and less density on the east side. So there's two things going on in there. Are you, are you, is that not your understanding?
Well, on the west side, there's residential.
Yes.
Right. Yeah. On the east side, my understanding was that we were going to try and keep things in the office department between Blake and Olivia, you know? And that is what I understood the planning and zoning board to say they wanted to do, to keep that area non-residential, in other words, to keep it commercial.
But in the commercial use on the east side, we could have residential because it would be upstairs apartments. Are we back to that?
If we, if we would permit mixed use. If we permit mixed use, ultimately, if we permit mixed use as part of a code update or not.
Well, if we took out the mixed use, I mean, the mixed use seems to me to be doubling up the number of uses, which we're going in the wrong direction, and the traffic, traffic-wise...
It's the square footage allows us...
Okay, Jeff.
You're going to adopt a plan that allows for a certain amount of square footage. You're not double, you're not increasing the, the traffic by increasing the number of allowable uses. And to the extent that you allow uses to have a lesser traffic impact than others, you're going to reduce the traffic impact. It's the other way around.
Right. Let's just, let's try to concentrate it this way at our, at our next meeting. We've got density on the west, we have lower density on the east, but that includes, that can include single-family, right? Jeff Morgan, is that your understanding? May I ask you?
My understanding is that you're trying to get to a lower density of traffic, and you need that to come across before you have a decision being made. Okay? Got it. So I, I personally accept what Jeff Sanborn has talked about this. I think it's intuitive on there. I think it's about a square footage. I think there's enough logical aspects, you can look at this and you could vote on it right now. But if you're not comfortable to vote on it, it still requires three votes to make this happen.
Well, I'm just thinking, we're giving direction to the, to the staff, we're not approving anything.
I understand. You asked my, you asked my opinion. My opinion is that logically, we have enough information right now to make this decision. You're not comfortable with that, if there are enough people in this board who are not comfortable, that we cannot get three votes on this. So the next step on here is, yes, we'll go ahead and get the traffic, and then hopefully from there, we can end up having a decision being made from there. from there, we can end up having a decision being made from there. Okay? I would also ask that the council members spend a lot of time doing the homework on this stuff that hasn't come out, so we're not doing it during the meeting. And we have read through this and fully understand what's going on, to best as possible, ask questions to Mark, or to, to Darren beforehand.
So is there consent necessary to move forward with this concept?
Yes.
Pat, you think you're, all right.
I'm fine with always this discussion.
What was your question, John?
Darren, Jane, and I may come in to meet you.
All right.
And discuss.
Okay.
And try to sort out any uncertainties.
Okay. So, lower density, what, what are we doing with single-family on the east side?
East side? Did I hear you right?
Yes, east side. So if we're looking at the east side over here, and-
As Jeff Sanborn has said, that will generate less traffic.
Let, let me, let me, I think what I'm, what I'm hearing, Darren, is, let's look at, at this along the lines of using the base low-density option, east of Morganton Road.
Highway 5.
It's the Highway 5.
Highway 5, I'm sorry. Which includes this recommendation of the single-family, rather than what the Planning and Zoning Board recommended. And on the east side, west side of Highway 5, look more along the lines of the high-density option because it's more in keeping with the current zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could you say that again?
On the east side of Highway 5, use the consultant's recommend, recommendation for the low-density option, which includes the single-family development in the park, open space in the south, south part of that. And on the west side of Highway 5, use something more along the lines of the consultant's recommendation for the high-density option.
Because that's in keeping with current zoning.
High-density option, why?
Because it avoids the conflicts associated with downzoning.
Associated with?
Downzoning.
Or currently, on that west side, you can't have residential multifamily.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and ultimately, we might find that there really, although it's called high-density versus low-density, there might not really be that much of a difference because of the minimum square footage requirements we have for multifamily.
What, what happened to the non-residential? What happened to the commercial stuff? In sections G and H? Which is what the planning and zoning wanted.
That's, I mean, what I'm hearing from the majority of the council is to revert back to what the consultants recommended, which was single-family with the park.
Park.
Yeah.
Because it has the lowest traffic impact, we think.
The lowest of the two, and lower than current zoning, if it's continued to be zoned the way it is now, that could create some density issues.
Yep. Well, let's give that a try.
And approve this with the use specifications?
Darren, is it possible for you to do sort of a, a new diagram so that, to clarify what we're looking at when you come back?
I will attempt that.
Yeah, rather than us trying to imagine.
We might be able to do a cut and paste on the image.
Maybe, maybe that's, that'll work. Something that's less confusing.
So you can understand, so conceptually, you can see.
Yes. Who really is saying that they want residential in sections G and H? And not, not the commercial? Really?
Didn't the comp plan say people wanted different housing opportunities down there?
Um, they said they wa, it talked about alternative, yeah, alternative housing specifically in this area in the comp plan. It did, it did call for stacked residential.
But there is, there has been a stated need by the public for how, for, for different housing opportun-
Correct.
I've seen that, okay.
There's no doubt.
So what we're seeing right here is consistent with the comp plan? In terms of-
No. In terms of the housing.
I think it's fair to observe that, that the, the comp plan recommended that this be more of a mixed-use overall solution, which would envision stacked residential.
And when we saw the cottages come in, we saw a need, how many-
But in the aggregate, it's still mixed-use, it just accomplishes it in a different way. So the, the comp plan did envision a fair amount of residential in that area.
And that was really to support that comp plan recommendation that had some confusion associated with it for the innovation hub.
Yes, the famous innovation hub.
And we, and we did the analysis on it, and-
Right, right. Okay, let's, let's look at this. We'll do some homework all together in the next two weeks. See how this, see how this looks in the light of day and, under scrutiny, and if not, we'll keep, we'll keep, we'll keep figuring it out. But at least we've come down to something specific to consider. Let's see where it goes.
I'm not, I'm not good with the-
I understand.
I'm not good with it.
I understand. We'll see how it comes out, and we'll, we'll, we'll go over these definitions, and then I'll, and I'll be thinking about this, this traffic impact and the capacity, infrastructure of Highway 5. Those are-
Hear anybody say they wanted to have residential on G and H?
And Jane.
Let's see what, let's see what it comes out to be. All right.
Anyway.
I think that's generally acceptable. So we'll move on from, from that, Darren. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to the next agenda item then on this regular meeting, which would be other business. Is there any other business that staff has for council? Any council questions or suggestion of other business topics to be discussed tonight in regular meeting?
No, none here.
Okay. We'll move on then to comments from attendees. Do I have a list? We have five people signed up to speak. I'll call the first name and then the person who will be speaking next, and I'll do that every, as we change from one speaker to the next. Susan Raff is the first speaker, and Teresa Johns, second. Teresa, I'm sorry, Susan, thank you very much. You understand our general guidelines?
Yes.
And thank you very much for your commentary to be. Please, please proceed.
Thank you very much for hearing me. My name is Susan Raff. My husband and I live on Dundee Road. We have been residents and homeowners in the village of Pinehurst for nearly 40 years. We have been vacation rental owners for 27. We started renting our first home after we moved our family out to next door. It is, the house that we rented out is a cottage built by Leonard Tufts. We rented long-term, then part-term, which eventually evolved into short-term. This was all before I had a computer. People wishing to rent would have to call me on my landline and to see if they could stay. We rent just not to golf groups, but many families, cyclists, traveling nurses, book clubs. We rent for all the tournaments. We rented to serve pro here to help with the flood relief after Hurricane Matthew. We had an author stay one winter to work on a novel. He loved Pinehurst. They all do. Many return once or twice a year with family and friends. We have families who rent for holidays and return every summer to visit parents and grandparents. We love when they come back and look forward to seeing them again, just as they love to return to our home and our beautiful community. Some have even decided to make Pinehurst their home. I remember when there was only a handful of short-term rentals. More and more of them popped up, and as they have everywhere, yet it did not affect our availability. Rental homes are an affordable accommodation option that has been, become especially popular in resort areas like ours. Our guests have found not only golf, but hiking, biking, sightseeing, great shopping, fine restaurants, playgrounds, and privacy. Not once in all these years, 27, have we had a complaint from any of our neighbors. I understand that some residents have issues with short-term rentals around them, but banning them completely without attempting to address those issues and curb them by enacting stricter ordinances and enforcing them is not serving our community. I dread to have to tell our guests that we have been shut down by the Pinehurst Village Council and will no longer be able to accommodate, accommodate them, nor will any other homes like ours. Please consider accepting the Planning and Zoning Board recommendations and allow short-term rentals to continue with restrictions, and put into motion a reasonable plan that will make all residents happy and proud of this unique resort village we call home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Teresa Johns, followed by Philip Sonia. Teresa? Good evening.
Good evening. Teresa Johns, 50, Glen Abbey Trail. I would just like to publicly thank the Pinehurst residents who were on the Planning and Zoning Board for their service to the village of Pinehurst. I urge you to follow the recommendations regarding short-term rentals. If you ignore their recommendations, you are saying to all residents, don't volunteer to help the village by being on committees. We don't value your time and input, essentially dissuading all residents from getting involved with any committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Philip Sonia, followed by Elaine Bologna. Elaine Bologna. Philip?
I sent out a lengthy email here earlier today, and I knew you were going to get a chance to review it.
Right.
But the bottom line is, you know, talking about STR data, I brought all the data forward so you could see it. About half your STR owners really just ran out for less than 90 days. And of that entire group, those guys are only booked about 25 days during the entire time period. I'm not going to talk just about STRs, I'd rather talk about a solution. As you know, I engaged in this discussion as part of my doctoral studies in public policy, focused on property rights, and I keep echoing the same thing. Communities communicate. I'm asking again, we do just that. We communicate. I reviewed the literature on the subject in depth. I've had significant consultation with public policy planners, economists, academics, and represented from both sides. I recommend we take a tangible approach that employs voluntary compliance, open fruitful communication between all parties at the micro level, leverages third-party oversight, empowers you, our council, with de facto power. Why would I recommend this course of action? Well, that book over there kind of helped, helped me with that one. And books written by Dr. Eleanor Ostrom. Her seminal work, Governing the Commons: The Evolution of Institutions for Collective Action, is the foundation of all results-based public policy and directly address the dilemma you're currently challenged by. I'm not saying this is my preferred way. I'm saying that every public policy institution in the U.S. concurs that this is the preferred path to create well-informed, efficient, enduring institutions. That is the number-one book on every public policy institution for a PhD. Her work here and subsequent work earned the Nobel Prize in Economics in a sub, in this subject and multiple other awards in political science and public policy. Communities communicate, and I really implore you to engage a significant amount of academic work in the subject, which is replete with examples on how to do it, and relatively self-governing institutions resolving problems just like you're facing today. Okay, so how do we do it? How do we significantly reduce the negative externalities, traffic, noise violation, poor behavior associated with STRs, through a cooperative approach while also enabling positive economic development, and most importantly, maintain or improve the character of our community? A practical approach to this is the one I mentioned before, results-based management. That's a collective action system procedure that's used across the world to resolve similar concerns, although this one, people aren't shooting at them, at each other yet. Results-based management involves having operators, here are the STR owners and managers, to craft initial operating procedures, much like you already have with the council and the amount of work you've already spent on this. Modify those and comport with local additions for any additional changes, neighborhood concerns, and employ an independent third party to inspect, record, audit, and compel those compliance. It also implores doing that at the micro level. So like every STR, meeting with the local neighborhoods to see where the small concerns are, i.e., for example given, a school bus shows up in parks right here, making sure there's not trash cans or parking that area. That third party will provide you a detailed report, here the council, so that the council can provide or withhold positive support for that property. The third-party oversight also will house strict annual inspections, digital oversight, proactive community micro-ingragens, multiple transparent and audible reporting paths for all entities, and it's a concept extremely well-received by Airbnb, VRBO, and Air D&amp;A. How do I know?
Mr. Sonia, you have three and a half minutes of our three-minute allocated time.
I really ask you to read the article I sent you-
Yes.
...and the data I sent you.
Thank you. We will. Elaine, thank you, followed by Larry Gleisner. Elaine, thank you. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm new to visiting these meetings, so I have sketchy notes here. Anyway, 91 Abbotsford Drive. And I understand now that I'm not allowed to direct comments to anyone specific, so I'll just say, thank you for the comments about the financial impact that you, as kids and other groups, have to our community. It's very important to keep them welcoming and coming back on a regular basis. So the importance of the financial impact of them is something that should be kept in, in mind. And thank you for bringing up the Manning Award. I did not know about that, but it respects our rich history, and it's important to acknowledge that history, and I do thank you for that. Regarding the library, I just want to say that for three years, we came here visiting to determine whether this is somewhere where we wanted to live, and I was thankful that they didn't charge me, just to say, to visit there, which I did on a regular basis, and I still visit there. So I respect that. It's, has a lot of history there, and it's welcoming to be able to just go in there and visit without having to pay as a non-resident. Regarding the parks and recommend, parks and, and recreation, a statement was made regarding listening to residents' voices, and that they are heard, and that's very important to keep in mind. And regarding a park just in general, on your new space you were considering, I was in baseball, softball, volleyball, tennis, golf, and whatever else, but a big green space is easier to use for playing ball, for playing football, for hitting balls, for doing everything, as opposed to a ballpark, which is hard to accommodate other sports. Just throwing that out there. Thank you for being very pragmatic in your approach to how you address subject matter, mostly, and I hope that you'll continue to do that. I went to the recent P&amp;Z meeting for the first time, and I think that they paid attention to the financial impact that our economy has enjoyed, and I think they paid attention to the rich history that we have enjoyed and that we share with the rest of the world. And I think that for the most part, they were pragmatic in their approach in making their decision and their recommendations to you. And relative to this small area that you're developing and for short-term rentals, I hope that you will continue to keep in mind financial impact, the history, and being pragmatic, and also pay attention to your values, mission, and vision that's stated on your website, and use a lot of teamwork, and be unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Larry Gleisner?
Hi, I was Larry Gleisner, 620 Lake Forest Drive, southeast, over by the Lake Pinehurst. I was here today because I was under the impression that the agenda was including waste, stormwater waste. Will that be discussed later tonight?
Yes, in the, in our work session immediately following this meeting.
Then, should I yield my time and have a comment after?
We don't take public comments at that meeting, so if you have comments about stormwater management, please make them now.
Okay. Very quickly, in my neighborhood, we have a recent, back about two, two years ago, a curbing of Lake Forest Drive to allow stormwater runoff to go to a certain catch basin. That catch basin is adjacent to my property between 610 and 620. Since, in those past two years, sassafras has had significant increase in some of the homes, and the runoff has, has only gotten increased, and to the point where now the catch basin is overflowing, and it is now going over the embankment, I'm sorry, over the embankment into my property, running off my pine straw, creating a flooding issue- the embankment into my property, running off my pine straw, creating a flooding issue in my basement, and the water's going through my yard to the lake. So I have asked the people who do that kind of work, Megan, I'll, I'll destroy her last name if I pronounce it, but I'll just say Megan. I've asked Megan for some input on it. She has verbally conceded that she would put a larger box catch basin in that, in that area, but I, I think that's just a short-term remedy to a long-term problem. I think I need a second stormwater catch basin on Lake Forest Drive to divide the amount of sheer water, the velocity and the current going down Lake Forest Drive into my property. That's all. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for those comments. The head of Public Services is sitting a couple rows behind you. I think he's aware of this particular problem, and we appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Thank you. And you're certainly welcome to stay for the discussion point coming up on that. That concludes the list of people who have signed up. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak to the council tonight under public comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn the regular meeting?
Yes, I move to adjourn the regular meeting.
That's a motion from Pat Brazella to adjourn the regular meeting. And is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Jane Hoagman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll move to the work session at 7:07. Thank you.